I'd like to convene the Carver Select Board meeting of January 5, 2021, posted pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, pending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Carver Select Board being conducted by a remote notification. It's also being recorded by Area 58, Community Access Media, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. I'm getting, here comes Paul. I'm getting reverberating. Does anyone else hear that?
Yeah, it's you.
Yeah. Oh, boy. Okay, anyway.
Yeah, yep. I can hear you fine.
Okay. Shall we do the Pledge of Allegiance?
We shall.
Do we have anything there, Rich, for the pledge? A flag?
Talking about Rich Gulart?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
You don't think so?
I haven't, I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, shall we pretend there's a flag?
We should.
Yes, yes, we shall.
Okay.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the Republic of America. Which stands republic
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you, Savory for the flag.
Well done, yes.
Would you like to read the community prayer?
All right, I guess I will.
Thank you.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all what we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Jim, do we have all the members of the Redevelopment Authority here yet? I don't see Joanna.
No, we're missing Joanna. We're missing Sharon. And who's the other person? We have Savory. Um, yeah.
Paul's here.
Paul's here, yeah. Okay, so.
Sarah, while we're waiting, what I might, Jim had asked a very good question about the role of, what the Redevelopment Authority, as it's not, as Mr. Maher is a member of the Finance Committee. And as it happens, Redevelopment Authorities are under the same section of the law as local housing authorities. So they are, they are state agencies, even though they are elected locally. And ultimately, you know, the board in a town does fill vacancies of, as necessary. And ultimately, as I understand, it can actually remove people if there are charges against them of some, you know, criminal intent. I don't believe that's ever been an issue. So to the extent that Mr. Maher is eligible to be on this particular board, even though he's a member of the Finance Committee, that is not a question, is it, as it pertains to housing authorities and redevelopment authorities and an urban renewal authority, which we don't have.
Right, okay. And fact that this is an appointment and that he would be filling a vacancy until he ran for reelection, that would make, that wouldn't make there be a conflict with the Finance Committee? Considering the potential changes we're going to do to the, to the bylaw? That's a question.
Well, to me?
Yeah, yes.
Well, considering, I don't believe this particular office would even be applicable to the current or a, an amended and updated bylaw.
Okay.
I don't think it'd be applicable. And we, and whatever the case is, we don't want to do anything presuming a change in bylaw going forward. But this is not, this is not applicable to that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walsh?
So Sharon Clark has joined the meeting. So we have a quorum of three members.
Has the RDA been called to order yet?
No, it is not. Because we have Would you like to do that?
Madam Chair?
Okay. Yes, Mr. County?
Yes, I would like
I just wondered, have we, have we asked if there are any citizens who want to participate yet? Did we, did we skip over that or did I, did I miss that?
We did skip over that, thank you, yes. Are there any citizens who would like to participate at this time?
I guess not. Sorry to interrupt, I just didn't want to miss that.
All right. Ms. Clark?
Hello, are we in?
Yes.
I'd like to call, having a quorum tonight, I'd like to call the meeting of the RDA to order.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Um, we are here, meeting with the Redevelopment Authority in a joint meeting to consider the appointment of Mr. Pat Maher to the Redevelopment Authority. And if I may, I'd like to start with the Select Board. Are there, if Mr. Maher, maybe, would you like to say a few words? And then we can talk to you.
Sure, sure. Pleasure to be here. I know several of you, so it's all, it's good to, good to see you again. And I, I think What was that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Maher, please continue.
Oh, okay. You know, I've
Sharon, would you, Ms. Clark, could you mute yourself?
I would love to if I knew how. But I'll just I'll just be quiet and Ron will stop talking to me.
Tell Ron to be quiet, please.
Ron, stop talking to me.
Good luck with that, yeah.
Mr. Clark, please continue.
Okay, again, a pleasure to see many of you. Some of you, some of you I've known for quite a while and some of you are new faces, so good, good to see everybody, see you again. I, for those of you that don't know me, I've been around for quite a while. I get about 30 years of experience in the municipal environment. Many of those being with the town of Carver. I was in the school department as business manager and assistant superintendent for about 12 years over a period of time. First started in 1993. Stayed till about 2000, did a couple of other stints, came back again in 2009, and retired in 2014. So I would like to, if possible, put some of that experience into some local committees and provide some history, some experience, some knowledge and so forth, and move Carver along in a, in a positive direction. So that would be my, that would be my goal.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the board?
Yeah.
Mr. Belvin?
Thank you very much for applying, Pat. My, my question here is that it's more of a statement, but it's also a question based, okay? With the urban renewal and the Redevelopment Authority acting for the town of Carver, how would you handle an issue if the developer chooses to change something along the way?
Well, I'm not quite sure I understand the, the question and my, what I, what I would like to say is, I, I've not had an opportunity to be part of the RDA yet. I don't know much of the background about it. I've done some reading as to some of the things that they've been involved with and so forth. So in order to answer a question like that, I'd like, I'd have to have some more background and maybe a little bit more detail or more specifics as what that might be.
Well, if, if the developer turned around and said he wanted to make a modification of, we say putting in a water tower.
Yeah.
And even though that was inherently vital to the North Carver Water District, how would you handle that?
Well, I think you'd, you'd have to find out what motivated the developer to do that in the first place. And what would the ramifications of that be, that piece of the project be to the whole? And what, what kind of an impact would that have, again, to the town? What's, what's in the best interest of the town? To have the water tower or not have the water tower? I mean, that would be, you know, it would be all speculative at this point, but it would be based upon the motivation of the developer and the impact to that project in a, in a positive or negative way to the town of Carver. That's how I would look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board, questions or comments? Ms. Bogart?
Um, I think if it's okay, my question is to, to Bob, because he was a member of the Redevelopment Authority in the past. Excuse my, I guess ignorance, but does the RDA oversee the selling of any properties in town?
Not the sell, well, yes, they do some selling. If the town gives property to the Redevelopment Authority to sell for them, they've done it in the past. Unfortunately, we found out that really you can't do it that way. It's got to go onto the municipal register first and put out there. So what's been done in the past really shouldn't have been done, but it's got to be done differently this, nowadays. But there's plenty of other things the Redevelopment Authority can do in helping the community with sales of properties or even helping in developing properties.
Well, just because I asked, because, because of the Finance Committee bylaw, I know that Rick said that there shouldn't be a conflict, but since it says no person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town may be eligible for membership. If, if the RDA has responsibility over selling properties, that would be responsible, financial responsibility. So I want to make sure there's not a conflict specifically there.
So, Mrs. Bogart, if I could answer that and Mr. LaFon, correct me if I'm wrong, since it really is a state agency, even though these individuals run in the town election, it would seem to me that that particular conflict would not exist. I don't know if Mr. LaFon wants to add to that.
Well, yeah, I would just say that, you know, an RDA, and certainly I know Bob has history there too, an RDA doesn't sell property per se unless the town has, you know, specifically disposed of it by deeding it to the Redevelopment Authority. That's my understanding. So at that point, it's no longer town land. It's, it's land of the Redevelopment Authority to dispose of as they see fit, presumably for a development purpose. That would be why a town would, would give property or sell in some fashion, dispose of property to an RDA for, so that the RDA can use it in some fashion for a development purpose. So it may seem a little bit of a shell game, but ultimately, the RDA would not be selling a piece of town property. They'd be selling a piece of RDA property that has been provided to the RDA in some fashion.
And then where does the, the sales of that property, where does that, the proceeds go?
I can answer that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I, um, two, two things with that. Number one is the Redevelopment Authority is a separate and distinct organization from the town of Carver. I think that's kind of the nuts and bolts of things. The second thing about an agreement, a memorandum of understanding between the town and the Redevelopment Authority would turn around and dictate how that money would be spent. A percentage of that would go to the Redevelopment Authority and a percentage would come back to the town. Whatever monies that the Redevelopment Authority utilize to make that property sellable will be reimbursed through the sale of that property. And anything that's left over reverts back to the town. That's the way it has been done in the past.
Okay. Ms. Bogart, do you have any questions for Mr. Maher?
No, I do not at this time.
Um, any other member of the Select Board, questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Towns?
Just, and not to be redundant, just, well, first of all, Mr. Maher, thank you for applying. And I think you're eminently qualified for this position. So I appreciate your stepping up. But Madam Chair, through you to Mr. LaFon, I just want to be doubly concerned here, because I am a little concerned. When I go back, not to belabor Ms. Bogart's point, but when I read the Finance Committee bylaw, and it talks about no person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town shall be eligible for membership in the Finance Committee, well, Mr. Maher is on the Finance Committee. If I understand the role of the Redevelopment Authority, if they're responsible for disposing of property, some of the benefits of which will come back to the town, isn't that a role of financial responsibility for the town? I just, I'm having a hard time separating the two.
Well, I guess my, my thought, Mark, is that the bylaw speaks to a role of financial responsibility for a town official. And in this case, if you're on the RDA, you're not a town official. As Bob said, it's a separate entity. Now, you know, whether or not philosophically you wish, you know, you wish to extend that, that's, obviously, that's, that's your, you know, your prerogative. But in terms of the bylaw itself, the bylaw, you know, speaks to town officials. And RDA is not a town official.
Thank you. LaFon?
Thank you. Mr. Maher, can I just ask you, because it might be immaterial, is it your intention, if you're appointed to the Redevelopment Authority, to remain on the Finance Committee?
Well, I wasn't, I would say so, but if there, but if there's, but if there is an inherent conflict on that, then that would, that would require another thought process, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend, did you have anything?
I just want to thank, thank Pat for applying for this. We appreciate the interest.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And I want to echo that too, Mr. Maher. Thank you so much for your many years of service, not just for our town, but for, but especially for our town. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, oh, here comes Joanna Layton. Otherwise known as Nana, apparently. Ms. Clark, would you like to talk to the members of your board?
Uh, yes. First, I'd like to thank Pat for applying. We could certainly use somebody with his financial wherewithal on the board as we go through the final stages, I think, in the next two years or so of the urban renewal project. I don't have any specific questions for him. I thank him for stepping up and wanting to become a part of it. It's a five-year term for which he would fill out the balance of the first year, which is just until our election, assumably in April, for which he would have to run for the balance of the four years. And I just want to make sure he understands that.
I do.
Okay. Savory, Paul, do you have any questions? Oh, I might add one other thing, Pat. If you successfully get on the board tonight, if you go back and watch our meeting of October, we had a full update on the urban renewal project by the developer.
Okay.
If, if I could add, Sharon, that if we knew early enough that this, that this was going to be a Zoom meeting, the proponents, Mr. McLaughlin, was going to participate and give the board an update.
Oh, okay.
He's very happy to do that, although they're a little bit reluctant to participate in a, you know, a person-to-person meeting under the circumstances. So at the board's next meeting, I have all intentions of inviting them again to provide some update to the board via Zoom too. So, but I do agree, that's a good, that's a very good meeting to help get caught up on, but there will be more coming.
They had, Mr. McLaughlin or his representative at the October meeting said that they thought they would have a more detailed update around March or April. And unless they have something specific to report, we can hold them on to, off till February. We have a meeting next week, but I can let him know that if he wants to participate.
To me, it's, it's whatever the Select Board wishes, if they'd like to get a, you know, an update at their next meeting, if it's via Zoom or if it's a matter of perhaps even a joint meeting or just an, you know, with an invitation to the, to the Select Board.
Okay.
I think it's whatever format everybody, you know, people wish to have, we will accommodate.
And, and speaking of that, the format here, I wanted to add, the reason we're having a Zoom meeting is because I got a phone call from Mrs. Layton, who has now joined our meeting, explaining that there were several members of the RDA who really did not feel comfortable meeting in person. So that's why we changed it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Ball's still in your court there, Mrs. Clark.
Um, Savory, would you like to make a comment or speak to Pat, please?
Okay, well, I just want to thank you again for, for stepping up. You, you will fill our, our, our membership if you're approved tonight. Just to address some of the other concerns that were brought up earlier, the RDA doesn't, while sometimes, every once in a while, they do have a piece of property, the, the laws of the state require that we, we register the property as, as Mr. Belvin said, and then we go to auction. So, you know, we've got to follow rules of auction. So it really doesn't affect the price of, of what the property is or how much we get in. We go to an auction and, you know, the, the highest bidder gets it, really. So I don't think there's any real financial implications here. And as Mr. Belvin also stated correctly, we are, we are a state agency. We are separate and, and equal from, from the town of Carver. We do not answer to the town of Carver, even though four of the five members are elected at town election. It is a separate entity and not associated with the town. So anyway, Mr. Maher, thank you very much for stepping up and I wish you luck tonight.
My pleasure.
Joanna Layton, would you like to speak to, or address the issue?
Yeah. I'm sorry I'm late. Internet hasn't been my favorite here in my house. I've had two days of continual problem. Mr. Maher, I'm glad you've come aboard. I'm currently the treasurer. I could use some oversight. And actually, we had to put our money maybe to the best interest. But there's other things I'm interested in. When you get on the committee, I'm sure we can further discuss it. But I'm really glad we can fill the board. And Paul, we haven't been able to sit down at our meeting also. I believe Sharon, next week, it's my interest as well as yours to go to a Zoom.
Yes.
Okay. And welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul, would you like to say anything?
Sure, thank you.
You're, you're, you're the old member now, what, a month and a half?
You just stole my joke. I was going to say, thank you very much for keeping me from being the rookie after only four weeks. That's great. Obviously, thank you. I think the, the ground has been covered on the pertinent issues. I'm still, I was was fortunate enough to attend the meeting where the big update happened as a, as a sideline participant. So I got to hear that and I would definitely echo that that's a good one to go back and hear. You'll get caught up very quickly there. But I'm still doing my own, digging into all of the details of what's going on now. So I'm looking forward to working with you and everybody else, if that's where we land.
Thank you. Back to you, Madam Chairman. Thank you. Are there any further comments and questions from the board? Mr. Belvin?
I just want to make a motion that we approve Pat Maher to the Redevelopment Authority.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye, but it has to be a a roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call, roll call vote. Mr. Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mrs. Bogart?
Jen Bogart says no, nothing to do with Mr. Maher. I'm just not comfortable with the bylaw.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman, aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye. So the motion passes forward to one.
Oh, yeah, Sarah, this is a joint vote.
I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Give me a minute, I was waiting.
Sorry, Sharon.
Ms. Clark?
Not my first rodeo with this one.
I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to approve Pat Maher for the interim position of the RDA?
I move that we accept the position of Pat Maher for the RDA.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Costas?
Paul Costas says aye.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore says aye.
Ms. Layton?
Mrs. Layton says aye.
And Sharon Clark says aye. It's unanimous.
Okay. So both boards are concurred. You are now appointed, Mr. Maher, to the Redevelopment Authority. Thank you very much again.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Look forward, look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Point of order, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Belvin?
I just want to let the Redevelopment Authority know that the meeting minutes, you guys can take directly from the Board of Selectment meeting minutes. That way you guys don't have to do any typing.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Since I don't see my, since I don't see Kelly here. Is there a motion to adjourn the RDA meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote. Ms. Layton?
I move to close meeting.
Uh, Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Costas?
Aye.
And Sharon Clark says aye. I don't know if Pat gets to vote now, but
Oh, he has to get sworn in first.
Okay, fine. So we officially closed our meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're still sort of on time. There's an EverSource poll hearing, which I am going to read public meeting notice for. We're a few minutes late. Are the well, let me open the hearing first. In conformity with the requirements of Section 22, Chapter 166 of the General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing has been scheduled at via Zoom, town of Carver, Massachusetts, on the 5th day of January 2021, at 7:20 PM, upon the petition of N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England for permission to locate and relocate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way or ways. Pond Street, one pole. Let me just ask before we move forward, Mrs. Weston, do we have the butter notification cards?
Yeah. Sorry. Notification, butters notifications are not required, just the mailing.
Do we have, do we have noticed that the butters were notified?
Uh, yes, the notification was mailed out and then the revised notice was post at the original location at the Carver Middle High School.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, my name is Marissa Jackson from EverSource.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Would you like to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, absolutely. The issue is, closest location is One Pond Street. We have a pole four over three, which is currently leaning. So at this point, we'd like to request to install another pole directly across from the existing. What that will do is brace the current leaning pole, and we'd also install an anchor, which is about a three-foot radius around the pole, and that will prevent any issue with the leaning pole going forward.
Okay, thank you. Are there any butters here who wish to speak on this issue? I hope we've given them enough time. I mean, it's, doesn't... There were a couple of butters, I know that, but there are a couple of names here I don't recognize. So I don't know if they are people who are butters or just interested persons. Okay. So if no one's speaking up as a butter, then we can close the public hearing portion of this hearing and continue our discussion and possible vote.
Do you, I'm sorry, Sarah, this is Cornelius Shea, 148 Plymouth Street in Carver. Do you need to be in a butter to speak?
Excuse me?
Do I need to be in a butter to have a question?
No, no, public, public hearing, anyone can speak.
Why don't they just replace the pole?
Ms. Jackson?
Oh, I apologize.
No, go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Yes, reason being for that, I drove out directly to the property to take a look. And it's, it's, the pole was initially installed, and now it's on a slope. I don't know if the area around it corroded. But if we change the existing pole and just replace that one, the same issue's gonna come about.
Isn't the same issue gonna arise by just putting one next to it? Sorry, Cornelius...
It's going directly, directly across the street, and that's completely level ground.
Are they gonna run the, I'm sorry, are they gonna run the wires over and back?
That's correct. We use a guide wire.
So you're gonna remove the existing pole?
No, we won't be removing the existing. What we'll do is install a new pole and brace it with an anchor, and also run a wire going from the existing to the, to the new install, and that will brace it from leaning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Shea. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mrs. Bogart?
I have a similar concern. The pole will be straightened, right? If the original pole won't be removed and replaced, it'll at least be straightened, correct?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, because I, I see on the application, it says pole shall be sound timber and reasonably straight. And if this one is so leany that it needs kind of an assistant, then the original one, I think, should be straightened. So that's great news.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Ash, I'll entertain a motion for further discussion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have to close the public hearing first.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Let's have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Further comments from the public?
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewan says aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now entertain a motion to approve the poll.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to approve the poll on Pond Street. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewan says aye. Okay, the poll has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you very much for your time. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote to create a formal process for recreational marijuana retailers permitting. And Mrs. Bogart, I believe this item was put on here because of your interest in it. Would you like to start off the discussion?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I hope this is the kickoff that we can set a formal process. I had emailed Rick a lengthy PDF with examples from other towns around the Commonwealth, and how they're handling these licensing and applications. I sent some examples of towns that just have kind of processes laid out of first, an interested party does this, and then once you've successfully done this, you move on and you move on. And I sent some examples, too, of kind of applications or questionnaires that any interested party has to fill out and pass in to kind of go along with the process. And I would like us to look at those and develop something that works for Carver, whether it's one, the other, or a combination of both. I think this is a good time to start, and I would definitely kind of volunteer as one to take the lead on it. But I would love us to work collaboratively, collaboratively to get something for us.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Had conversation with Jen, and I would also be happy to work with Jen to put something together to bring back to the board at a later date for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Yes, I was thinking a similar thing, especially in light of the length of the document. And, you know, we, we got it yesterday, which is fine. I was considering entertaining a motion to do exactly that, let Jen and Rick work on this, come back, bring us a...
Sarah, I'm happy to allow you to take my place if you'd, uh...
Oh, no.
Certainly, no, whatever you like.
At any rate, yes, and just come back with a document, obviously shorter, but, and more tailored to the town of Carver, that maybe we could then really get our teeth into it some future point. So I'm willing to entertain a motion to that effect, if anyone's interested.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
A second for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Discussion?
Yes. I like this idea. I like it that there's a process put in place, whereas, like you said, Jen, first you do this, then you do this, then you do this, with a step by step. And there's no if, ands, or buts about how you handle the situation. If you're gonna apply for it, great, but you gotta follow these steps. And I think the Board of Selectmen should be one of the first people to notify, be notified that this is what we're looking at down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Mrs. Bogart?
Yeah, well, well, to Bob's point, I believe all of the, the examples that I sent are almost all of them, the Board of Selectmen are like the very first place to go. And not all 34 pages were dense reading, because some of the application pages were lighter with the questions and spaces. But I would, this isn't gonna be done by our next meeting. So as I work on it with Rick, I would really like you guys to look at what I sent and, and decide like what parts you like. Do you like more of the process? Because some of the towns do flip-flop a little bit. And the questions, too. So maybe at the next meeting, it could be on, on the agenda to talk about kind of what Rick and I have been working on, and maybe you guys will have time to have more input, too.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to have Mrs. Bogart and Mr. LaFawn work on this and bring us, bring us something new at our next meeting. All in favor?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewan says aye. Okay, thank you all for that. The next item is a discussion and possible vote to make changes to Chapter 1 of the town bylaws. Now, this is not as lengthy a document, although we did just get it today. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I just had just a quick comment while reading through, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. LaFawn. We've seen in a couple of different bylaw changes that we've handled now, where the term Board of Selectmen is, should be changed to Select Board. Since I believe the legislator, we, we applied to the legislature to change that. Shouldn't that just be done everywhere? We don't need to vote on this every time we change Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Do we, can't the town just take action on that, since the legislature's taking action on that?
Well, actually, the Attorney General approved that. So, yeah, that change should be being made.
I would, I would agree, Mark. I don't think we need to go through a process through all our bylaws to update that language, yes.
So, so we can have somebody work on going through all the by, just changing Board of Selectmen to Select Board wherever it appears?
I think Elaine can find someone to do that. That's my guess.
Well, my, my point is, we don't need a motion. We can just do it, right? Because...
No, I, I would agree. Yes, you don't need to do that. It's effectively done, right? It's just catching, catching up the documents, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
So, through you, the, I created this as a, whatever you wanna call it, a rough draft per se, for the other board members to look at, and then go through the process of a public hearing for changes of the bylaw. I'd like the other board members to go ahead, and if they have any questions about this, what I put together, this is just my feelings that I put on paper. Didn't get anyone else's opinions, and that's what I want now. This is the rough draft. See what people want, if they wanna go forward with it. I don't think it's at the point of having actually a vote or discussion on the vote or anything. I think this is more of a fact to say, let's take a look at this, read it. I also think that the town moderator should be part of this, and also the town clerk. I, I was hoping, I was hoping for a postmortem by our moderator, but I haven't hired high to hear if that's being done, or not gonna be done, or whatnot. Because like I said, at last town meeting, there were some issues, and we need to get those resolved. And the bylaw that I put here together as a rough draft can be expanded, or changed, modified, or whatnot. So when we go to town meeting, that, or at least the public hearing portion, before town meeting, that everyone gets their say, and that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments on Bob's version of Chapter 1? Mrs. Bogart?
All right, so I'm gonna kind of go through section by section. Is there a legal reason or any sort of reason that town meeting has to be on a weekday, and it can't be on a weekend?
The Board of Selectmen are the ones that pick the date for town meeting.
And, and in the past, there's a long history to it, Mrs. Bogart. So you could probably check with former town clerks, but I feel pretty sure that many days of the week have been tried, including a Saturday. And there is no good day. I mean, there are people who are, just because of their work or their life situation, are gonna miss it. But Mr. Belvin's right, it is up to the board. And traditionally, it's been either on a Monday or Tuesday evening.
Okay.
But again, there were other times in the past. Maybe Rick can remember some of that as well.
I don't remember any, any, certainly no weekends. They tend, tend to be Monday, Monday nights over the years.
I think maybe before you're in my time, there were some weekends.
Okay.
And it's just anecdotal.
Okay. So it could be a weekend. It doesn't have to be a weekday. So that answers that. Then, before we change any polls times, I think we should talk to the town clerk to change the poll instead of from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I think we would definitely need her input.
Yeah.
Going down my notes, any of you can explain this. 1.1.4, no motion to adjourn without day shall be in order. What does that mean?
Well, actually, that was my first comment, too. It looks like a typo. I don't know.
Okay. Okay. I, maybe we can figure that out and fix that if nothing else, because that makes sense.
Mr. Belvin?
I think the intent was that, is that if town meeting has not finished all of its business, all right, you have to set a date of the next one at that meeting.
That's right. I believe, I believe the typo should read, instead of without day, without a date. That, you know, time and date set for the next meeting. I think that's the intent here. I think Mr. Belvin's correct.
Okay, so like a continuing date. Okay. May I continue to ask my questions?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So I guess this will be, to Bob, 1.1.5A, you wrote, account of voting members will be delivered to the moderator, and that number will be stated to the membership. When would you see that stated to the membership? At the beginning, in the middle, throughout? When would that be stated?
Bob, you have to unmute yourself. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm writing on my computer. So you would have that right at the beginning. So you would know how much you're starting the meeting off right then and there. Now, you're gonna have people coming in late, and it's gonna increase those numbers. But at least if you have a baseline of, at this time, we have this many members in the building. We know that.
Okay, then, if, again, if this goes, I think that should be stated in that modification, so stated to the membership at the beginning of the meeting. Then 1.1.7, everything, or request for special committee or commission. Can you explain that, Bob?
So, the issue with this is that the current language, because I've tried to have committees created at town meeting, and they say, I'm out of order, you can't do that. And what it says is that it has to be, every registered voter has to be informed in writing at least seven days prior to the meeting, of the full powers, authority of the commission, or the manner of this solving, the same ones formed. All right, so how can you go ahead and send everybody, every registered voter, a notice to say you wanna create a committee for town meeting?
Well, the, the easy, the simple answer is not easy, but the simple answer is you would do it the same way you notify the voters of the town meeting warrant articles. And that there's going to be a town meeting. You, you posted on the website, or you put it at the fire station. Mr. Belvin?
Well, see, that, that's the issue here, is that you're not notifying every registered voter. Because this is what it's saying, this is what it says right now, is that if you wanna create one, you have to let every registered voter know that you want to create it. So if you now say that it's, oh, well, if you put it on the warrant, then you can. All right. I, I know that other towns have created committees through town meeting, and they haven't had to jump through that hoop, is that they just say, hey, listen, we wanna, we wanna start this committee here, all right? And there you go. You would hopefully that, that would go on. And it's the whole notice part, is say, okay, fine, if this is the process that you wanna start a committee, then we need to have a process in place that says, this is how you start your committee.
So, so Mr. Belvin, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Belvin, I think that, the confusion, I think the confusion here is that the other towns who started committees at their town meetings undoubtedly had it on their town meeting warrant, that they were going to start Committee X. And so you have to post the warrant seven days prior. Now, not everyone is gonna go look at the website, or go to the fire station, and, but you, but you've tried to notify all registered voters. That's probably how they did it in those other towns. I'm just guessing. But that's how you notice people that there's a town meeting and what's on the warrant. That's the only way you can do it. So presumably, the other towns that you're talking about, who did that, had that on the warrant seven days prior. had that on the warrant seven days prior. That would be my guess. But I mean, there's nothing wrong with the way you've written it either. You present it to the select board prior to the last meeting before the closing date of the warrant. Then it goes on the warrant.
Right. If I can, and just for the public that's here, so they can know what we're talking about here is that, I took out the whole one point, one point seven on, uh, chapter one. And I put in the following in place of it. A request for a special committee or commission to the town meeting is to present it, is to be presented to the select board prior to the last meeting before the closing date of the warrant and cannot be denied. This includes bylaw review, investigative boards, committees, commissions, authorities and public officials. The committee created will have the authority to call members and be provided all documentation needed. The committee will report all findings to the town meeting membership. So, um, what I basically did is have a process to say, okay, this is, if you want to have a committee, then this is what you do. And it allows any resident to come before the Board of Selectmen and say, we want to bring this committee forward. And it basically says is that the selectmen can't deny it. They have to put it on because the next order of business say, well, if you, this doesn't happen, then you basically have to go through a petition article process. Which I mean, this is something that if a resident wants to turn around and create a subcommittee of town meeting, and this is of town meeting where they're, they go back and report to town meeting. Isn't that going to report to the Board of Selectmen or anyone else? This is, goes back to town meeting. All right. So that's my process.
Okay. Mrs. Bogart, before you continue, I have a couple of points just on this, one point, one point seven.
Go for it. Yeah.
So I, I believe it should read, um, is to be presented to the select board prior to last meeting of the, of the selected board before the closing date of the warrant, because otherwise no one's going to know what the last meeting is, what, what meeting you're talking about. Um, and then down on the sentence, it starts, this includes, that you have an S at the end of include. Bylaw reviews, so on and so forth. Sorry, the next sentence, the committee created, it should be created. I know that's the typo.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do have a question about this sentence. Um, this includes bylaw reviews, investigating boards, committees, commissions, authorities and public officials. I don't understand. Are you talking about a, a committee that will in, conduct an investigation of other committees in town?
Or? Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, that should be stated more clearly because it, it, I, it just, I don't know. I wasn't sure what it meant and I'm not sure that it's clear enough. Boards that commit, of a committee that would include.
Well, it should be investigating comma boards. Or semi colon.
Now, we'll, we'll have to figure out how that needs to be phrased. At any rate. Mrs. Mrs. Bogart, would you like to continue your?
Yeah. No, I had the same, the same question and concern as you because I, I didn't understand where the public officials part in that sentence came in. Like, would a committee create a public official? So I think you're asking for clarification. I, I echo that. And then.
And I guess, I guess my question about that too is, I mean, we, I don't know that you, how can you establish a committee to investigate a public official? I'm just not sure that's how that's done. Hang on one second, Mr. Bellman. Mr. LaFond, do you have any?
Well, I, I don't know how that happens either, especially of a, a committee of a legislative body. I think if it's a committee of the executive authority, meaning the select board, presumably you have authority within the bylaw, um, to, you know, to make, to do some sort of investigation and to engage counsel on behalf of the town if you so choose, um, a.
Session too.
Yeah. I mean, a, uh, you know, a committee made up of the legislative body. The, you know, would not necessarily have the authority to, you know, to call witnesses.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think that's a, a, I don't think that particular role is appropriate for a legislative body. That's, that's my, my opinion. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Bogart?
Yeah, because the, just the rest of that doesn't make sense. The committee created will have all authority to call members. What, I'm not sure what that means and be provided all documentation. I, I, I get and I agree with clearing up any ambiguity about informing members in writing. And if the warrant does that, great, but the rest of it, I'm not totally clear on. So maybe we can, Bob can talk more about that in person. And then my last thing would be in your two point, one point three. Bob, you said the moderator will be a member of the Mass Moderators Association and attend at least one training in person and one remotely or online.
Then I'm sorry to interrupt you. That's chapter two, which is not on the agenda.
Oh, it was included in the thing. Okay. My bad. I'll save, I'll save that for whenever it's on. No. Okay. So, so that's it. Okay.
So I'm going to just add my two cents to that. Under one, one point, two point one. And again, this is just a typo. It says town, town, town meeting in the town hall at the clerk's office. That takes an apostrophe.
Yep.
Okay. And then under one point, one point twelve. Number B says the town clerk will instruct counters to count all present town meeting members prior to a hand count. Um, I have a real problem with that because my understanding of the way it legally works, it's not the town clerk's meeting. And it's entirely up to the moderator to decide if and when a, a count is needed. So that's number one. And and you may, you may be, if I, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but you may be trying to keep them separate on purpose to make sure one is helping the other. That could be your intent. But I'm not sure that that's a town clerk's role. That's just number one. And number two, I think for this whole section here, we need the moderator and the town clerk to, to be with us in the discussion because if I were one of them and another, and they are elected officials, I wouldn't want us deciding what they're going to do in the performance of their duties. It's just my, um, so my thoughts. Does anyone else have any comments on chapter one?
I have a, a couple of comments.
Sure. Mr. Townsend?
Madam Chair, but I think on, first of all, on one point, one point seven. I just need to, we, I, I need to think about that a little bit. There's a lot there and I, 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 I think we need a little more, more time on that. Um, so a, a couple of things. Forgive me, I, forgive me, I lost my spot here. I, the, the, on the one point, one point twelve, where we talk about the town clerk, counting all the members present. That's a difficult thing. I mean, you have people in the bathroom. You have people coming back and forth. So I don't know how, how that would work. Um, and I guess I had one more comment, but you know what? That is on chapter two. So I will save that for when that's on the agenda.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Let me just give Mr. Hoffman a chance here. Mr. Bellman, come back to you.
Just a couple of quick questions. Um, first on one point, one point one. As far as extending the, the polls until eight o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think we should, well, my personal feeling is I don't think we should be expanding the hours. I think the last election proved that we can have shorter hours and still get everybody to vote. Um, I know it's a long enough day for the, for the town clerk and um, I don't, and personally, I don't think from six to eight on a Saturday is going to make much of a difference, but that's just my opinion.
Right. And I know that in the past, um, there were a couple of town clerks who did sort of unofficial surveys in their head and the number of people who came between six and eight hardly warranted, um, you know, paying the poll workers, but again, that's, you know, something that we should talk about clerk, talk to the clerk about too.
Sure. And, and I guess my other question, Bob, is, um, one point, one point seven. I guess, what, what, what are you looking for on that? There's a lot of, a lot of words and a lot of things going on. What, what was your main, you know, your main reason for, for, for putting that in? What, you know, what are you exactly looking for?
Are you talking about the, the second part of it? Uh, bylaw review, our investigating or the investigating part? Is that what you're talking about or?
But what, what, what do you want the special committee or commission to actually do?
They can do anything that is directed toward them when they go to the Board of Selectmen. So say, Joe James wants to come in to the Board of Selectmen and say, I think the, the town meeting should have a bylaw review instead of the planning board doing it. That there are just members of the, um, of the town meeting that they get picked by the moderator, because the moderator is the one that actually picks the people for that committee. Uh, that's what's already put in place. Then that's what happens. They're going to go ahead and there'll be, say, five members that'll say, all right, we're going to start going through these right now. So the planning board isn't doing them. It's a separate committee that's looking at them because the planning board, my opinion is they're looking through those bylaws to do it a certain way to help another person or kind of make it streamlined to extent, but also they're looking at the other end of saying, well, we need to do this, this and this. Well, the review is actually go, it says, do we need this? They're acting, do we need this bylaw? Okay. And is it too far reaching or should it be narrowed down? So it basically puts the onus on the planning board of creating it. All right. And going back to town meeting, it's actually members of town meeting separate and distinct of, uh, appointed or elected board.
So, so your main thing on this is the, is the bylaw reviews. I know that's, you know, one thing that you want to do. So you're looking for a committee or a commission to, to do this type of thing. Yeah. I'm just trying to get the gist of what, what you're, you know, what's, what's like the meat of this? You know, what are you, what are you looking to gain from this type of thing?
It's not what I'm going to gain. It's the residents.
No, I, no, what I mean is what are you looking to get accomplished by establishing a committee like this or a commission?
It's the controlling feature. It's, it's no longer the control of the Board of Selectment or the control of the town administrator or the control of the, um, planning board or zoning board or whoever else it could be, the conservation commission. It's a separate and distinct entity that's going through it and they represent town meeting and they report to town meeting. They don't report to anyone else but town meeting. Which I feel is one of, an extremely powerful position to this extent of saying, they want me to do this. So, um, and it's whatever charge that that committee is going to do.
So if I may interrupt one second, Mr. Bellman. So if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're suggesting that this separate committee or commission of town meeting members should be the ones to review conservation bylaws, planning, zoning bylaws, those kinds of things, rather than the people who are in the positions on those boards and commissions. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but what I'm saying with, but with.
The people on those boards and committees and commissions, especially if they've been there a while, one, one might assume that they have more knowledge about those things and what may or may not be, need changing, just considering, the kind of work they do on those boards and, and commissions, which is not to say town meeting. Town meeting is very important. Don't get me wrong. That's, I think everybody here knows that I feel that way, but my, my suggestion is it might be more profitable to just keep allowing the people on those boards and commissions to, to modify their own bylaws and then bring that to town meeting. Um, because there's presumably some level of expertise on these boards. One would, one can only hope. Just my thought.
Well, that's why the power of calling in, if you're going through a conservation bylaw, then you would call in the conservation agent and discuss it with her. All right. You would bring in the conservation commission if there's members that want to speak toward it and, and offer changes or whatnot. It goes through them and say, okay, fine. This is what we do and you now have a level of other people listening to what's going on and it's not just people coming to town meeting. Cause this is one of the issues that when you go to town meeting, we have a huge, and just take the conservation bylaw. It's a huge bylaw. And you're trying to read in the warrant that you're changing this, you're modifying that, you're doing this, we're striking that, we're adding this. It's hard to follow from what the old bylaw was and what the new stuff you want to put in. All right. And this would give another entity the ability to say, okay, fine. Is this really needed? Even some of the questions that people may have may get resolved at this stage before town meeting by talking with other people than just themselves. Okay. Because unless it goes to a public hearing, all right, which it has to anyways, but you go before a public hearing, fine, you have your say, but it's already been crafted. And what I've found over the years is once the planning board, all right, or the conservation, once they create this bylaw that they want to bring to town meeting, they're not going to change it for anybody that sits up there and says, hey, I don't like this. I want you to change this. And either one or two things happens. The first thing is you say, huh, no, we're not going to do it. So the second thing is, well, there's no time to do it because we can't change this now because we had our, our, our hearing too close to town meeting. Cause that's what's happened too. Cause I've been to public hearings where I've said, hey, can we change this? Can we change that? Uh, it's too late. We're just here to, this is a formality here. We're not going to change anything. This is our bylaw. We made it. All right. Period. Cut and dry.
Okay. Well, I think you've helped to explain what you, what you mean here. Is, is anyone willing to make a motion to?
I, I just had a comment on, on the last statement, last statement that Bob made that, you know, once something comes to town meeting, that you can't change the bylaw. I mean, there have been bylaws that have been amended and changed. I mean, you know, I can think of the solo bylaw. For instance, the solo bylaw committee put a year's worth of work in and then it was amended at town meeting to change exactly how it was intended to be. So it's not, you know, not a hundred percent that way, but I understand what you're saying. Um, no, the other thing we might want to consider is should every committee and commission review their bylaws on a, every, you know, couple of years or whatever. And that way they can have public hearings, open it to the public. Instead of having a separate committee, have each committee maybe review their bylaws. Though not every year, obviously, but maybe on a five year cycle, something like that. Maybe something we can look at down the line. Cause I agree with you, Bob. Things do have to change. Times change. You know, bylaws should change. Uh, and I think if you open it up to the public, people will come to that. So kind of the, kind of the vice versa, let the people come to the committee versus having the commissions and committees go to the, this new group. Just, just something to throw out there. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. LaFond?
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you, Sarah. I have two, two points. One is that anytime you have a committee or a commission of any sort, um, looking, doing anything technical, they would generally need some technical advice and that may be often legal advice. Um, and I think you'd have to be consider, considerate of the fact that, how does, you know, a legislative body, a subcommittee spending dollars or engaging council, but only the select board hires counsel. So I don't know how too far away you can get from, um, you know, to have a legislative, a, a, a subcommittee of a legislative body do any type of investigation that may need any kind of technical requirements. The, the other thing I would say is this is purely being the policy wonk here. Um, I think we always have to be considerate of, you know, you have two branches of government. You've got an executive branch. You have a legislative branch. And what's the appropriate role? Um, you do not have an elected, uh, you do not have a town meeting representatives elected. You have select board members. You have planning board members. You have other members that have been elected by the town. Your town meeting members, it's not a representative town meeting. So I think if you had a representative town meeting, you're in a, you're in a little bit of a different place in terms of what authority that you should be bestowing on, on that body. So again, that's strictly from a policy, um, you know, organizational standpoint. Again, that's strictly from a policy, um you know, organizational standpoint that I think you need to consider too. Um there are officials that that are elected to represent the community. In this town, town meeting members are not elected to be representatives, so. You know, food for thought as you consider this down the road here.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn, um I would like to um entertain a motion to either. Vote on this tonight or uh place it on the agenda for our next meeting. To see if any of these issues that we've talked about here can be clarified. And maybe we can have the moderator and town clerk at our next meeting, Mrs. Bogart.
I would make a motion to put this on another agenda to talk about it, if for no other reason to clarify 1.1.4. About adjourning without a new day set, I just think that should be fixed if nothing else, so.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Are we gonna, a part of your motion, are you gonna ask the town moderator and town clerk to attend that meeting as well?
Yes, Mr. LaFawn, could you um help us with that?
Sure, I will invite them both to the next meeting.
Thank you.
And if they can't make the next meeting, okay. We can wait a couple of weeks, I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I think providing them a copy of this for their comments, I don't know how. How long they would maybe need to um review and again, provide any information or to the board. Um I think we'll have to leave it up to them to do that, so. We can play it, play it by their schedules, Bob, and see when they're prepared to do that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, if if I could just suggest, perhaps we could amend the motion. To include discussion of chapter two changes as well, since that includes. The town moderator as well, that way he wouldn't have to come back for two different meetings.
Okay. Hey, I will amend my motion to continue discussion on chapter one. And chapter two at a future meeting with the town moderator and town clerk included in the meeting.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart and Mr. Townsend. There's been a motion and a second to place this on the next agenda and to include chapter two and inviting both other elected, the other two elected officials. Further discussion? All in favor?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Mr. Hoffman says aye.
Mr. Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewin says aye. Great, thank you all. And the next item, and then after this next item, I'm gonna suggest we go to a two minute break. Um so this should be quick to change the name of the Conservation Land Ad hoc Committee name to Carver Trail and Conservation Stewards. And to possibly get a town email, now, I know that Mrs. Weston. Had said there's, there may be an issue with getting a town email because we only, we, we, they, we, they get paid for and we only have a few left. So um that might want to read to get a town email if possible. Just, just so you know. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, it's been a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Um just about the email, um. I had an issue sending this out to um Jen because Jen has a number of different ones with the town. Um is there a way to consolidate those ones from the dot org, the dot gov and. Jennifer Bogart or Jen Bogart or?
You know, I um I I think Bob, what happened is that some of us who. Were here a few years ago were dot org emails and then the new emails got assigned to the dot gov. I don't believe that's something, certainly not something I can change or consolidate. Um you'd probably have to talk to IT about that.
I think Jen and I have the two different ones.
Yeah, you do, you do, they may run out of the dot org, who who knows how it works, you know?
I think we're special, that's why, but that's just me.
That's probably what I'm saying, right there. Okay, I think there's been a motion and a second. And the motion was to. Approve?
Approve, yeah, to change the name.
Thank you, um is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye.
And Sarah Hewin says aye. Great, well, that's official, I appreciate that so much, and now if we can, just take a two minute break and then we'll hear from Mr. LaFawn.
Did we skip over one?
Yeah, we did, skipped over the select board.
Oh, no, not again, alright, we're gonna do that tonight if it kills us, ready?
We'll put you back from break.
We'll do it right after the break, yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're back. Um the next item, before we get to the town minister update, is discussion on possible vote on proposed, proposed changes to the select board bylaw. Um that's on page sixteen of your packet.
Yes, Sarah, I think that the fundamental question here really comes down to. Um what you believe the appropriate role of a select board member is with regard to serving on other appointed. Boards and committees, the, I mean, the rest of it's more or less housekeeping.
Yep, I agree.
So I turn the discussion over to you, but.
No, thank you, and I I appreciated your comment because um. So, yes, and also Mr. Corbo's comment because it. He's correct in that the way this reads, the select board members can hold appointed uncompensated positions. On a town committee that do not issue licenses or permits. And that, so that's what that additional red sentence is there in 2.2.7. Yeah, so it it just, it's in conformance with the proposed idea of not being on two separate permitting authorities. Um the last item, 2.2.8. There's a typo, it should be in making appointments. To the various offices, I think that's a typo. Um and although Mr. Corbo points out that this um. This is not binding, personally, I think it should stay in there because um. Town meeting, I think there was something, some town meeting where this came up as an issue. Maybe it wasn't, maybe it was something that, oh, I know, it was a, it was a planning board appointment, someone had not. Won the seat on the planning board. But they were, and then they were immediately appointed by the select board as the, as an alternate. Um. And it just, I guess, just didn't seem right to some people, so I believe that's why that's in there. And I, I know that it does still not include, Mrs. Bogart, the um. The famous line that you would like in there as a 2.2.9, which says this does not interfere with our First Amendment rights. For some reason, you mentioned that you wanted that in there.
Hmm, no, that's not, sorry.
Forget it, of course it doesn't, sure, right. Um that different, different policy. Um does anyone wanna make a motion so we can have a discussion?
Make a motion to approve the suggested changes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, is there, is there any discussion? Miss, Mr. Belvin and Mrs. Bogart.
I agree with keeping uh 2.2.8 in. Um uh it was an issue where um even with the redevelopment authority, when I was on um. Left the redevelopment authority, go to the board of selectmen. Um one person that ran for select board, I mean, for redevelopment authority, he didn't win. But then he was appointed by the select board to be on the RDA when there were actually three applicants.
Hmm.
So uh in all actuality, he should never have been appointed. By the bylaw, but he was anyways, so um that's a perfect example of why we had three people going for two positions. But it, the bylaw wasn't followed, so keeping that in is very important.
Yeah, I I agree. Uh, any other comments, Mr. Townsend?
I just, I I also agree with keeping 2.2.8 in there. And just to make sure we make that correction and and change in making a points to and making appointments. That's all in the first, first sentence.
And I I feel at this point, it's probably. The best thing to do is for me to actually read what 2.2.8 um says, so the public can know. Um it says, in exercising its authority and making what will be appointments. To the various offices, boards, commissions and committees within its jurisdiction. The select board will honor the will of the voters and will endeavor to avoid appointing anyone to a position. Who ran for but was not elected to that position within one year prior to the date of the appointment. So that's what we've been discussing here. Okay, there's been a motion and a second, and Mrs. Bogart.
Yeah, uh okay, so for 2.2.8, I was not aware of the example Bob gave, but we had a similar situation on the planning board. Where there were three applicants for two positions and someone who had lost was appointed. Uh back onto the board, so.
That's the point I was talking about, yeah.
So I think 2.2.8 is. Having the word endeavor in there just means that the the select board will try not to. But it doesn't set any parameters on what that means, like the select board won't. Will honor the the will of the voters unless that person is the only applicant for the position. Like endeavor means to try hard to do something, but clearly they didn't try hard if you pick one person over the other two, so. Having endeavor in there just leaves it subjective, so if it's gonna stay, I think it needs to be made objective somehow.
So would you suggest amending it to remove the word endeavor?
Yeah, but somehow. Somehow go one step further and say that, you know, that person. If someone lost, that person could be reappointed, but only if there weren't other candidates. For that opening, you know, within a certain amount of time. Because if no one else wants to do it, then the person who didn't win should be given an opportunity probably, but. I I mean, we have two examples right now of when it wasn't followed because endeavor is. Open ended, so. So I'd like to see it stay, but I'd like to see it made in something that has to be followed, not just a suggestion to follow. I don't know what the right words are for that. Um and then something, go for it.
Well, I was just going to suggest, since there's been a motion made and seconded to approve this, would you like to amend that? With, by saying you want to take out the word endeavor and then have town council make this. Um much more clear that has to be followed, it's not just a suggestion.
Yes, definitely, as long as I can make one other comment too.
Okay, go for it.
I do think that something should be added saying that a select board member may not be on the finance committee. Because I know it's in the finance committee bylaw, that a finance committee member can't be on the select board, but I think it should be in here too. So it's, you know, it's equal, cuz you'll say, oh, well, the select board bylaw doesn't say I can't be on the finance committee, oh, but the finance committee one does, which one's right? So I think that should specifically be added here.
Okay. So, Mr. Hoffman?
As far as the 2.2.8, um I don't think. I know when I was on the planning board, I was on the planning board at that time when that issue came up, I was not made aware of this law, of this bylaw. So I don't know as far as how. If if this was presented to us, I would have known what that meant. And even with the endeavor, I know we wanna get the, you know, uh town council involved in that. But I think with the endeavor to avoid appointing kinda is a, goes. Unless they're the only one, they shouldn't be appointed. Type thing, like if I had known that, I wouldn't have voted that way, but I was not aware of this, so again, I'm not sure how. Stick, you know, how particularly have to be with changing that. I just think more of it was just, and I'm not sure, Bob, what the RDA uh situation was, but. I know that the planning board, we weren't aware of that bylaw. If we were made aware of it, then it would have, it wouldn't have happened.
Um, Madam Chair? If I may, as far as 2.2.8, I I believe I remember that discussion. Uh where the the the, that Mr. Hoffman and and Miss Bogart's referenced, and I remember. Questioning the previous town administrator about the wording and wording endeavor, and I think. He issued some guidance that maybe I think the the will of this board doesn't quite agree with. I like the word endeavor in there because I think it gives the select board some flexibility if they need it and. Sometimes you you don't necessarily wanna be locked into a, a certain position, so I. I I I I I think the will of this select board is not to appoint somebody to a position that they. They just failed to get elected to, but I I think it's a good idea, quite frankly, to leave that wording that's in there now, in there just. You never know what's gonna happen, and I think sometimes. You need a little flexibility just in case, so I I think we should leave it the way it is.
And that goes to Mr. Hoffman's point that if, which is kind of your point too, Jen, I think. Um in that. If if they don't have a choice, if it's only one applicant and that person just didn't win a reelection. But the board needs that member to have a quorum, for example, then then our hands aren't tied. Um. So.
Yeah, no, I get it, but but in in the example I gave, there definitely were options. And so, and just having that bylaw like that, just, again, makes it a suggestion in. In my opinion, and as you've seen, I don't like wishy washy bylaws, cuz then they're just by suggestions, not bylaws.
Okay, so how would you like to amend the motion that was originally made?
Okay, so I guess I would amend, uh what was the original, I would amend.
What 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 would your amendment be, and then whoever made the motion can accept that or not?
Okay, well, I guess I would like, I would suggest to amend the motion to include. Getting town council to edit the wording of 2.2.8. To say something along, you said it really well, Sarah, um of what you said town council would add to, unless, you know, if there's an opening that no one else wants. Um then the person can, you said it so much better than I did. Um and and then what do you guys think about adding the finance committee uh into 2.2.7, so it's stated in both bylaws?
Can I, can I chime in here, Sarah?
Yes, fine.
Um to the one, one point with regard to the language in 2.2.8. Um I I think in order to, it would, it's almost, I think, impossible to outline every single situation. Where somebody would not be eligible um to be appointed by the board. I think you either have to make somebody ineligible, period, af- unless they've been. You know, uh, you know, if if they've been on a, off a board, if they got defeated, I think you have to. Just make them ineligible for a period of time, because I think the number of conditions that you could possibly come up with could. Um I I mean, you can envision anything, so.
Yeah.
I think I think you have to, in my opinion. Uh maintain the flexibility of the board or just simply have conditions where people are simply not eligible.
And and actually, if you do that, if you just got rid of the word endeavor, it says. To avoid appointing anyone to a position who ran for but was not elected to that position within one year prior.
Right, I I think you'd have to just just simply make them ineligible.
Yep.
If that's what your intent is, right.
Right.
Uh the other point, to Jen's point about the bylaw, I think my concern is. You know, how sometimes we we change bylaws, amend and update bylaws, but. We don't look through the entire set of bylaws to see if we're creating an inconsistency. Uh so I I think we wanna be careful that if you, you know, the the, if. If everybody agrees that the finance committee bylaw is clear. Uh then I think to the extent that you start adding um related items to other pieces of the bylaw. If you change one, well, now you have inconsistencies elsewhere, so I just think you wanna be careful about that. Having similar provisions in two different places, cuz I think we've seen that before, I mean, I think we've seen it recently. Um so as I said, I just think we wanna be careful about that.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Mr. Townsend?
I'm just under, as far as 2.2.7. It it says a select board member may not hold any other elective or compensated office. Well, the finance committee is compensated, they receive a stipend, so I think. A select board number is already prohibited from serving.
That's right, it says nor any compensated appointed town office or employment. Yeah, so that that pretty much covers it, Jen, I think.
They all receive a stipend, not just the chair, vice chair?
I believe they do, Mr. LaFawn, perhaps you could confirm that for me?
They, at the moment, they, yes, they all do, they all do, yes, right. But in 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 fairness, there could come a time when they. But in, in fairness, there could come a time when they don't, they don't have a stipend. I mean, the town meeting could, could eliminate those, but that's why I think relying upon the Finance Committee bylaw as it exists is pretty, pretty good. I think we want to tighten the Finance Committee bylaw, so there's no doubt, but but I, I would, I think it, like, as Mark says, I think it's, it's on a couple of different levels, I think, or that it's pretty clear. Again, I just don't think I should overcomplicate this, because, again, we see instances just recently where where, you know, we have something in one part of the bylaws that becomes inconsistent, you know, in good faith over a period of time. So like I said, it's just a cautionary note there.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. Okay, there's been a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
One quick question. But on, for 2.2.7, does it, and I don't see it anywhere, if, if a selectman, similar situation to what Jen and I had, where we got elected and we were on one of these boards, does this, should we say something that the person has to resign from said board? I don't think that's in here anywhere, is it? I know we're taking out, which was the confusion that they don't have to resign, but is it, is it given that they have to resign, or should we put that in there?
Well, if, if you can't hold any other elective or compensated office under government of the Town of Carver, then I think that means you can't be on the planning board or on the Select Board at the same time. Because they're both elected and they're both compensated, so.
Okay.
Although minimally, I might add.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we have to be that clear to say they have to basically resign, or it's just a given by that.
Well, I, to me, that's pretty clear.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I want to make everything crystal clear.
No, I, I, that's very, that's good, Jim. You're, you're, I'm glad we talked about that. Yep. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I just, I, I did the same when I was on the redevelopment authority and I became a selectman. The first thing I did is resigned as have a formal resignation of the redevelopment authority, make sure it's clear, I'm resigned, and then I got sworn in right after that to board a selectman. So I think that's the process that should be done for anybody that becomes a board or selectman member.
Okay. So Jen, is your amendment still to take out the word endeavor?
Yes, and if there are apprehensions to that, I would, I would suggest we discuss changing the one-year prior term to maybe a six-month term before you can be reappointed again. But yes, I think endeavor should be removed.
Okay, is that the only amendment?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. Would the person who made the motion care to amend that? Amend that motion?
I think that was me. I'll make a motion to put the amended-
To remove the word endeavor, to approve-
Remove it, to remove the word endeavor from the previous motion.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
I think I seconded the motion initially, but I like the word endeavor in there, so I, I don't want to second the amended motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to amend the motion, which now is to approve the Select Board policy and remove the word endeavor. And for the discussion?
We have to, sorry, we have to also remove the word to and will avoid appointing, not, so we have to remove endeavor to.
Yes, you're right. You're absolutely correct. Thank you. You're hired.
That's it.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor? They say aye?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart, aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Jim Hoffman, aye.
Mr. Townsend says no.
Okay, and Sarah Hewin says aye. Okay. Hold on. Okay, here we go. Okay. Mr. LaFawn?
Yes, few, few, few things here. Number one, CARES Act update. As you know, you've been informed that the legislature, I'm sorry, the, the federal legislature and the president has approved the extension of the coronavirus relief fund to extend to December 31 of next year. That's obviously very helpful for all of us, although some people are would rather, rather get all this paperwork over with. The reality is, is that we've got a $1.7 million allocation for Carver, and we've got about 1.2, 1.3 pending. This allowed really for us not to submit some, you know, some more speculative claims, certainly very worthy, but in terms of our ability to get reimbursed for, for things, it's, you know, it, it's, I'm not sure how successful we would have been. Our second, we have five pending, I'm sorry, we received one check, as you well know. We've got another one that looks like it's just about going to be released for about $71,000. We had about $245 not approved in that last submission, and that particular submission, which is pretty, pretty good. And we have three others still pending with, with the, with the county. And again, those add up to about 1.2 million, and we had some projects that we were going to submit. I think this is what, this makes sense. I think one of the things that, that kind of bothered us all, both operationally and philosophically, that we were basically being told to find a way to spend money and to do it within this period of time. We have no idea what else, what other needs the town's going to have. We're probably going to be in a position of somehow supporting testing, somehow supporting distribution of vaccine potentially. We have no idea what costs those are going to incur. We have no idea if we're going to get additional federal aid for such things. So to be spending all of our money before we know what all of our needs are going to be, really didn't make a lot of sense. This makes sense, and we can be a little more deliberative with, you know, how we choose to, to spend money so that there'd be, really won't be any question at all as to, in terms of the viability of our requests. So that's where we stand right now. Again, this is a very positive development. I know that at the local and state and federal level, all of our legislators are working hard to achieve this. So we certainly want to thank them for, for those efforts. Any questions about that at the moment? The, the next piece I'd like to mention is trash, 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 and more trash. The, as everyone knows, that we're moving to a, in conjunction with Wareham, a pay-as-you-throw program in order to maintain, to keep the track transfer station in Rochester open. I think we have tried our best to keep the, the website updated, as sometimes, you know, seemingly every day as to what's going on. It's fluid. As recently as 15 minutes ago, I got an email and a text from, from Wareham on the subject. I, one of the things that I think is important to know is that the stickers are going to be on through the beginning of February. The stickers that would have otherwise expired the end of this December. Wareham has set up a link so that people can get their stickers online. They can also get them at Wareham Town Offices. The trash bags, right now, the, in Carver, Shaw's has agreed to sell them. They are not available just yet. Hopefully, the next day or two, they will be. Wareham, as recently as, as I mentioned a couple hours ago, has released the locations in Wareham where bags can be purchased, and we will put those up on our website tomorrow. People can purchase bags, you know, Wareham or Carver. That's really not an issue. So we're hoping that as early as, you know, by midweek, we'll have, it'll be a complete picture as to what people can expect for the, for the program. As they say, it's been a moving target, and I, I certainly, I think we all appreciate the patience of the public. We've kind of been at, to some extent, at the mercy of Wareham. And I know they've had to work pretty quickly by municipal standards to get the pieces in place to maintain the transfer station. So I don't know, many members, I know, Bob, I don't know if you have anything in addition to that that you're aware of, or?
No, it's just, I continue with the frustration of not knowing where to pick the bags up. I've done my best to let people know what's going on, on Facebook, the three big pages for that we have available. Yeah, it's, it's going to be a rough start. I mean, I didn't go down there today to see where they were at. But just people need to be aware that they are closing at 3 o'clock and not 5 o'clock, so you got to get there before 3. It's 8 to 3.
And, and we will continue to update the website as, you know, as needed, and at this point, it could continue to be every day or every other day for the foreseeable future, but you know, this is new territory. I know the, the district's been in place offering this service for about a couple, couple decades now. So change isn't easy. And, and again, I certainly appreciate the effort of Wareham, but they were thrust into a little bit of a, you know, tough situation. As you know, their dependency is, is significant compared to Carver's. It's obviously a valuable service to, to us and our citizens, but it's, it's critical to Wareham. So, so they've had to adjust, and I like to think we've supported them as much as we can.
I'm just, I just want to say, Wareham has done a really good job of taking the bull by the horns and trying to get this done and, and up and running in a short period of time. So I'm happy with that. I think it's a good way for us to work together, to help each community. But I think that we need to have a little more discussion amongst our town of what's available for trash and refuse, and what we can do for, whether it be mattresses, TVs, some type of recycling area. There's programs that the state offers availability to towns. So I mean, I think we should look into other, other means instead of people trying to throw stuff away on the side of the roads or in cranberry areas or dirt roads. And I think we, we have an opportunity to go ahead and maybe offering a day or two to drop off things that are bulky items, metals that could actually, we use, sell the money, I mean, sell the metals for money. So small amounts of change could help the town a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin, Mr. LaFawn.
Yeah, if I could just, although they're not listed on the agenda of, under my notes, if I could just add real quickly two things. As of today, we, we have a part-time inspector, as you know, Bob Francis, retired again a few weeks ago. You know, didn't give us a whole lot of time, advance notice. So as of today, we do, we do have somebody who's, who's in that role, who's, who can get us caught up and is willing to serve at least, you know, for a reasonably indefinite period, if that, if that makes sense. So we're pleased for that. And one other point is that the next meeting, I, I'm assuming that we'll be prepared to make some sort of presentation to the board on our overall budget process and quoting our estimated receipts and revenues. As it happens, we're looking at about a $1.2 million problem right now, based upon our estimates. Finance Director Meg Lemay and I will be meeting with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee on Thursday afternoon to, to give them an update and maybe get some of their ideas and, you know, take some of our ideas so that we can start putting this together with all the, the, the players. And it's going to be tough, but, you know, we have to do it. So that's all I have tonight, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. Appreciate that. Minutes licenses topics not recently anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. First, we have a request for a common victular, automatic amusement, entertainment and entertainment for NGR Cape Cod LLC. Doing business as Yogi Bear's Jellystone. Jellystone Park Camp Resort, Cranberry Acres. And we have Mr. Dan Sero here.
Yes, hello, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Very good. Thank you for your time and opportunity tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting. I wasn't sure where you were, and I'm sorry I pushed you up to the front.
I learned an important question. Find out where on the agenda you are. It's been great, though. You're all doing a great job, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Please go ahead and tell us about your your license application.
Yeah, so basically what it is, is we obviously acquired Shady Acres, and really, the application is just to improve on crafts and activities here at the, at the resort campground. And just to make sure we deliver a higher level of guest service and, you know, obviously meet our brand standard with Yogi Bear. And basically, it's just enhancing what this place has been and what we hope to do. So that's, that's really all we have at this time. I was still new in the, in the ownership, but we're excited. It's a great product. It's a great location. And we really look forward to offering a great attraction and resort here in Carver. So very excited about it.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion and a second for discussion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the application.
Any further discussion? Any questions?
No, good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Good luck.
Just one quick question?
Yes.
What type of changes are you looking to make from, from the existing? Just a, it's a good way just to let the public know you're going to be talking to everybody in town now. It's a good way to get some PR.
I, I think the good news is, it's just going to be a, a, a difference in staffing level here at the, at the resort, and, you know, a little bit of change in, you know, seasonal versus transient bookings, if you will, to the, to the property. But really, I think it's an enhancement of offering activities and crafts and things of that nature, which, you know, I know they did quite a bit of those things, but as a brand and as a company, we really specialize in those areas. So we're really just elevating the game, you know, and, and really going to deliver a higher level of service and, and you know, quality to the patrons that are here and to our visitors that come in. So you know, that, that's really it. I can't speak too much to what Shady Acres did in the past, obviously. However, you know, we know what North Gate Resorts is and what we plan to do. So we're just excited to have the opportunity.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, there's been a motion that's made and seconded. All in favor to approve the license, the request for common victular and automatic amusement and entertainment?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewin says aye. It's approved. Thank you, Mr. Dan Sero.
Hey boo boo!
I love it.
Congratulations. Good luck.
All right. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
How long you been waiting for that?
Oh, man, I'll, I'll be along.
Hey, listen, we do have a, a uniform and a costume. That's good. Well, you might be the right person for that job.
Hey, I offered to do the one for Honeydew Donuts.
Okay, I'm going to keep you in mind, okay? I'm going to call you up later on.
Bob, I think you've been practicing, too. Sounded like a wily-
My whole life.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Our next Select Board meeting will be January 19, 2021. I'm actually going to ask the board if we can table the minutes of 12:04. I thought I had looked at them, and I, there were just some things that need amending. And so, and I don't want to, I hate to do that to Elaine at the last minute, so I just would request that we table these minutes for now.
Make a motion. We table minutes to the following week.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any further question, discussion? All in favor? Mr. Belvin?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye.
And Sarah Hewin says aye. Okay, thank you for that. Executive session minutes of August 4, 2020 for approval and not for release. Is there a motion?
Make a motion. We approve and not release the minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve but not release the minutes of 8:04, 2020. All in favor?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewin says aye. Okay, thank you, folks. Select Board Community announcements. Does anyone have anything? We'll start with Mr. Townsend?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hoffman?
I have nothing, either.
Mrs. Bogart?
Same. Same.
Um, I just, it's it's this whole COVID thing, um. It it's really frustrating for all of us. Um. And one of the things that I look forward to with the Carver Sportsman Club is our game dinner, and we actually was canceled uh for this year. So uh, we're hoping maybe it will be in the summer. Um, we'll try to do it then, but. Um, we just need to be safe, everyone. Wear your mask, please. Stay away from other people. Thank you.
Use Zoom. Okay, great. I I don't have anything either, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second that.
A motion made and seconded. If any further discussion, seeing none?
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jim Bogart says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye.
And Terry.
Hey boo boo, time to go!
Time to go. Thank you. Thank you all, bye.
Bye.
Have a great.